Welcome to the Board of Education's January 9, 2025 regular session meeting. Please stand as we observe a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Ms. Morgan.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a few announcements before we begin. As announced at Monday's work session, the Clothing Center Committee was scheduled to meet tomorrow, January 10th at 11:00, but due to the weather and canceling school tomorrow, that meeting will also be canceled. that meeting will also be rescheduled. And Board members, hopefully you have seen your calendar invitation confirming the meeting with our state legislators on Wednesday, January 22, but I wanted to announce publicly that that meeting has been confirmed and will take place at Bridgewater Place located on Bridgewater Road at 9:00 a.m. I also wanted to let you know as soon as possible that Superintendent Riswick and I made the decision to cancel our January 24 quarterly work session. There are multiple meetings scheduled for the evening hours over the coming weeks, including several community meetings, so we wanted to offer everyone some relief on their busy schedules. Any items that may have been submitted for that meeting will be moved to our Monday, February 3 work session. And Knox County Schools will be closed, well, tomorrow, but also on Martin Luther King Holiday, Junior Holiday on Monday, January 12, or, I'm sorry, January 20. Are there any requested changes to the agenda?
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Triplet, second by Ms. Christie. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right. Ms. Cote.
Item 5.
Item 5, consent agenda.
Second. A motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Mr. Triplet. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 6A, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy D-190, payroll as amended.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Mr. Triplet. Do we have any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 6B, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy D-200, expenses and reimbursements as amended.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Mr. Triplet. Do we have any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6C, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy D-233, technology purchases as amended.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Mr. Triplet. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6D, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy D-241, internal school funds as amended.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Mr. Triplet. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6E, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy D-280, fundraising activities as amended.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Mr. Triplet. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
7A, approved memorandum of understanding with Knox Education Foundation for receipt of grant funding up to $75,000 to fund the completion of the literacy specialist cohort for 14 Knox County Schools employees.
A motion by Reverend Butler, a second by Ms. Christie. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
7B, approved Patel Education TSI NSTEMX STEM Classroom Grant sponsored by TBA and BVI in the total amount of $68,500 for A.L. Lott's, Bricky McLeod, Cedar Bluff, Gibbs and Longsdale Elementary Schools, Carter, Gibbs, Gresham and Harden Valley Middle Schools, and Farragut, Halls, Karnes, Powell and West High Schools.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Bike, a second by Mr. Triplet. Any discussion? It's a lot of schools. Seeing there's none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
7C, approved Knoxville TBA Credit Union Simply Smart Educator Grants in the total amount of $22,805.59 for Austin East, Bearden, Carter, Central, Farragut, Fulton, Gibbs, Halls, Karnes, Powell, South Dole and West High Schools, Career Magnet Academy, Harden Valley Academy, Dr. Paul L. Kelly Volunteer Academy, and the Allen N. STEM Academy.
A motion by Ms. Bike, a second by Ms. Christie. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
7D, approved grant agreement with National Education Association Foundation for receipt of a student success grant in the amount of $5,000 for Gibbs Middle School.
A motion by Mr. Wright, a second by Ms. Christie. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
7E, approved Delta Capigama Society International Early Educator Grant through the Tennessee State Organization ZETA Chapter in the amount of $250 for Moreland Heights Elementary School.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Mr. Triplet. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 8A, approved superintendent's annual evaluation.
A motion by Reverend Butler, a second by Ms. Christie. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Yes, Reverend Butler.
I would like to say that as a board, we just assessed our superintendent's performance as above expectations, that's a four, and we still have work to do. We know we haven't achieved all of our goals, but I believe that the comments from the assessments are saying that we're headed in the right direction, and we are in the middle of creating a new strategic plan. I'm reading from my script so I get this right. Consistent leadership will be important for us to achieve our goals for every student moving forward. Next year, the superintendent will enter the final year of his current contract, and I believe going forward, we need to have that confidence that we're going to have the person in place that's going to move us forward. So I'd like to ask the superintendent to bring us a new contract for consideration in February, and if it's appropriate, I'd like to put that in the form of a motion.
Okay.
So I move that the board asks the superintendent to bring us a new contract, four-year contract for consideration in February.
Second. All right. The motion was made by Reverend Butler, a second by Ms. Christie. Ms. Christie, any discussion?
I agree with you, Dr. Butler. I do think that it takes a long time, and when you start initiatives, things don't happen overnight. And I also know that there are a lot of school districts looking for superintendents right now, so, you know, I do appreciate that suggestion.
Yeah. Thank you for suggesting that. I'm also in support of that. Is there any more discussion on this motion? All right. Well, let's go ahead and vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Reverend Butler.
Item 8B, approved tenure for eligible teachers.
A motion by Ms. Fontenot Ridley, second by Reverend Butler. Any discussion? Yes, Ms. Fontenot Ridley.
I said this on Monday, thank you for allowing me to speak, by the way. I said this on Monday, in case people didn't hear it, but I am so proud to be able to be on this end of somebody getting their tenure and not the one trying to get the tenure. So I want to congratulate all 240, 240 teachers who have worked their tails off and shown that they have worked their tails off. So congratulations to you all, and I appreciate all their hard work.
Yeah. Awesome. Thank you for that. All right. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 8C, approved recognition of international baccalaureate economics at both the standard level and higher level as substitutions for the economics graduation requirement.
A motion by Ms. Bike, a second by Reverend Butler. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8D, consideration of resolutions regarding the Emerald Academy Emerald Charter Schools renewal application.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Mr. Triplet. Any discussion?
We will need to make a motion on which resolution.
Oh, that's true, yeah.
Yeah, I would make a motion to approve the Emerald Charter School renewal application.
Second then.
Okay, so the motion is to approve the renewal. Motion made by Ms. Christie, a second by Mr. Triplet. Do we have any discussion on that? Okay. Why don't we do, want to do a roll call? All right, why don't we do a roll call vote on this one?
Dr. Butler?
Yes.
Ms. Templeton?
Yes.
Ms. Fontenot Ridley?
No.
Ms. Bike?
Yes.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Triplet?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Ms. Christie?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Dr. Butler, would you like to change your pass vote? Ms. Templeton? Ms. Bike? Okay, that is five yes votes, one no vote, and three pass.
All right.
Item 8E, discussion and possible action on revised 2025-2026 school year calendar.
So move?
Yes, sir.
Motion by Ms. Bike, a second by Ms. Christie. We have any discussion? Ms. Bike.
Kind of just echoing, you know, what we said on Monday. I'm so glad we have these opportunities to change the calendar, to make more people happy. I know we can't always make everyone happy, and that I really appreciate Ms. Lotner and Mr. Wilson's hard work and their team's work on this calendar, as well as everyone else that works on the calendar. And I would like to make my motion to go with option D. Is there anything specific that I need to do to do that?
No, I think because it's being revised, and I think that was the revised option, so I think we're good there.
Okay. Yeah, I really appreciated option D, and I think that, you know, I did hear some feedback, and I talked to some of my principals, and I think I said this on Monday, that a lot of people really wanted that two weeks for winter break, both for students and teachers to kind of feel refreshed and come back. And I know we talked about that, and having that Memorial Day just so soon really crunched things, but I guess I would also ask that maybe for the year after that, which would be '26, '27, that we really try to work on that, and it sounds like that's potentially possible.
Yeah, I'll speak to that if you...
Yes.
So, thank you, Ms. Bike. And obviously, I can't speak to what the '26-'07 calendar will hold yet, but there is a little more flexibility, I would say, in that. And I actually went back and looked at some historical calendars, all the way back to 2013, '14, and just kind of how they've changed over time, and maybe what some of those factors were. And I can't remember the exact year, but there's, you know, I think around 2015, '16 or '16, '17, we started to do the week-long fall break, which had been two days prior to that. So for folks who've been around a while, that was probably a place where we had a shift to where we started coming back a little bit earlier, more towards like August 1st rather than August 3rd or 4th. There was actually, including this calendar adjustment that you guys are making, two other times that we came back prior to August 1st, but again, that had not historically been the pattern. I would say the most common, to your point, the most common number of vacation days at that winter break has been 10 for teachers as well as the students, or actually extends the students by day. And so that is something, you know, if we look at these tough years and we start to consider that July date, that is, or the starting in July, and obviously, we don't want to get early in July, but looking at that, in these tough years, that may be the way to try to preserve more of the winter break when you look at that. So each year brings its own set of nuance in terms of trying to come up with a final plan, but we do look forward to having a couple of years, and the person making the calendar, having a little more flexibility in the next couple of years around how we bring options for that.
Do the early release days affect that very much?
Not really, and just as a, without trying to go too far down, happy to explain that in greater detail, but when you think about your early release days, they come from the same method by which we get our inclement weather days. So those are earned through additional time that we attend school every day. So you're allowed by the state to go to school longer each day, which we do by 30 minutes than required, and then you can bank up to 13 instructional days through that acquired time, but you're only allowed to use those days for certain things. So that instructional time you build can be used for additional opportunities for PD. It can be used for inclement weather or illness-related things where you may have to have a school closure, but to start to try to repurpose that time for days that are designated as instruction and/or to extend a holiday or something like that, you're not allowed to do that with that time. So there's a little bit of weird state math in all of that, where sometimes a half-day counts as a whole day, and those sorts of things that can be kind of hard to track, quite honestly, if you're not in it really deeply, but it does become different when you start trying to repurpose like some of what we've done through early release and professional development and stuff like that.
That makes a lot of sense. Thank you. And then I think, maybe Cory, I don't know if this is the time that you want to talk about this.
Oh, is that the early release document?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Does that have impact on this, or you want to just kind of go over it a little bit?
Madam Chair, no, I don't think it would have an impact on the calendar itself. It's just a question of, I know, Ms. Morgan, you had asked to see kind of a preliminary, like sneak peek at what's coming in the early release day survey, and so that's what you all have in front of you.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Is there any more discussion on this item? All right. Well, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. And I just, before Ms. Cote goes on to the next item, I want to thank the Emerald families for being here this evening. Since we have voted for the renewal, if you guys want to head out, you are welcome to leave and enjoy your three-day weekend. I didn't want you guys to get stuck here for the rest of our meeting, so y'all enjoy your evening, and thank you for being here.
Madam Chair, can I just also recognize and thank Mr. Diggs while he's here?
Yes, please, yes.
Because they do a lot for our children in Knox County Schools as well, so I do appreciate that.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Diggs. I don't see you, but I know you're here. He's enjoying that snow day. All right, Ms. Cote, rolling on.
Item 8F, approved 2025 legislative priorities.
All right, and I believe we do have some public forum.
We do, we have five speakers, so we'll start. Paula Hancock. Paula, you know the routine, but if you'll state your name and county residence, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you so much, Mr. Triplet. Paula Hancock, Knox County, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Superintendent Riswick. As an immensely proud K-12 public school-educated individual, an educator with 20 years' experience as a corporate professional, a public school educator of 28 years, a wife, mother, grandmother, member of a Gold Star family, and member of the Knox County community, I stand before you speaking to advocate and to protect our students, educators, and the education professional to create great public schools that prepare everyone for success in a global society by investing in our profession and fully funding Knox County students and schools. Funding is the key. Ensuring our students succeed starts and ends with the resources and opportunities we give them. No matter where we live or what we believe, our public school educators want all children to succeed. Our Knox County school educators follow an education-grade commission, and they go forth teaching all children regardless of race, ethnicity, religion, sex, or sexual orientation. We want all of our students to have the funding they need to learn without limits and unlock their dreams, but many students will be denied opportunities because their schools and communities will be underfunded and under-resourced because of current voucher and school choice legislative initiatives. On all counts, vouchers and school choice harm public schools, education, and students. Vouchers still scarce funding from public schools and give it to private schools that are unaccountable to taxpayers. They do not reduce public education costs. They increase costs by requiring taxpayers to fund two school systems and one public and one private. The result is that public schools, which educate 90% of students, wind up with less funding. This leads to larger class sizes and fewer resources, such as educators, textbooks, school nurses, counselors, technology, lab equipment, as well as music and athletic programs, to name a few. Let us be reminded of Abraham Lincoln's famous line from his House Divided speech, which states, "A house divided against itself cannot stand." For we know the foundation for which he derived the words in this speech, Lincoln used this line to explain that the United States could not remain divided forever. He believed that the country would eventually only be able to sustain one system. For he and we know that no one can serve two masters. For either he will hate the one and love the other, or else he will be loyal to the one and despise the other. Furthermore, there is no conclusive evidence that voucher programs improve overall student achievement, nor is there any validity to claims that by creating to create a competitive marketplace for students, vouchers force public schools to improve while these programs continue to discriminate against students with disabilities, strip away students' human and civil rights, as well as exacerbate segregation through a selective process. We should also not forget the importance for which the founding fathers viewed public education in the preservation of American democracy. John Adams, this nation's first Vice President and Second President of the United States, was among the first great champions of organized education and wrote about... was among the first great champions of organized education, and wrote about the vital need for quality education to be accessible to all citizens. Adams is quoted saying, "Laws for liberal education of youth, especially of the lower class of people, are so extremely wise and useful that to humane and generous mind, no expense for this purpose would be thought extravagant." He saw a clear link between a strong public education system and the health and strength of the American democracy. He also saw education as a vehicle for previous generations to empower future generations with the ability to learn and prosper. Adams made his strongest argument for the value of a strong system of public education in a letter to British reformer, John Jebb, when he wrote, "The whole people must take upon themselves the education of the whole people." If we are serious about doing what's right for every child's future, let's do what works. Support legislation and legislative priorities that provide every Knox County student with a public school education that inspires them, encourages their curiosity, and prepares them for success. Support legislation and legislative priorities that provides public school educators with the support, resources, and time to do their jobs well
Ms. Hancock.
and the security to retire redig.
We messed up on the timer, but it's been
That's all right.
I let it go a little longer, three minutes, just
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Because the timer wasn't on. And that was our fault, but
No, that's fine. So thank you for your time. I appreciate you all.
Thank you.
Got a little bonus time.
Erin Christner. Erin, if you'll state your name and county of residence, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, Board, for having me. My name is Erin Christner, Knox County, currently residing in District 5. So I'm here before you, just like Ms. Hancock spoke to you about the Education Freedom Act. I'm also here to talk about that. I'm a father of two, and so my daughters are about to start school. And I want to stand here in front of you all, just to let you know that I also think that when the time comes, you all should consider the impact of this legislation, and that what it will do to the public school system that my daughters are going to attend. This, this type of initiative around the country is wildly unpopular among voters. 65% of voters in Kentucky, every single county in Kentucky voted against this. In Nebraska, the program wasn't even around for an entire year, and they voted to repeal it. Colorado also rejected school vouchers. And South Carolina, their program was deemed unconstitutional. Okay? The only way that these systems get passed is through legislation. But I want you all to do, to realize that, you know, this, this type of method, this type of approach to educating our children and our nation's future is not the correct way, and what Governor Lee has proposed. And the idea of withholding hurricane relief funding in, for, for trying to garner support for this type of legislation is not the right way, and is not very popular. Should I get this passed? Ms. Hancock talked about our, John Adams, one of our founding fathers, our founding father, said that separation of church and state was paramount, and I don't think that our tax dollars need to be going to any religious, religious-backed institutions for schooling. So just that when the time comes, I hope that this Board considers that and, and votes against supporting this type of legislation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Brandy Jenkins. Brandy, if you'll state your name and county of residence, you'll have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Brandy Jenkins, Knox County. Good evening, everyone. I have a letter from State Representative Sam McKenzie I would like to read to you. I believe you each have copies as well. I want, he says, "I want to respond to the priorities introduced recently by Board Member Triplet. First, it's nice to have areas of common ground. Funding preschool special needs is vitally important. Last year, we, the General Assembly, appropriated $106 million, and the federal government provided 1.3 million for special education services. If we adopt this strategy of creating TISA funding for the preschool, it will cost an additional $92 million each year, and a funding source needs to be determined, state or local. Having individual lotteries for each LEA would be problematic and take a change to the state constitution, which can be up to a six-year process. We have proper funding mechanisms in place, and honestly, Knox County, not raising taxes this century is a dereliction of our duty. As it relates to expanding charter school funding at the state level, charter schools have more flexibility than public schools. The local school district controls public education. Charter schools can dictate their own curriculum and standards to an extent. They have the ability to try new things, which vary in results. There's no recurring investment for public schools. Why should charter schools be treated differently if they are a public school? States generally have three ways to assist in funding K-12 infrastructure needs, appropriations, financing assistance, and dedicated revenues. Tennessee leverages appropriations and financing assistance, but does not specifically dedicate revenues to K-12 capital expenditures. According to the Comptroller's Office, the statewide cost of school infrastructure needs over the next five years is $9.8 billion. On vouchers, the data tells the story. Students do better in public schools in general, and imagine if the state fully funds Knox County schools. The improvements we could make and lives that would be changed would be dramatic. Vouchers will be unlikely to help low-income students to attend a high-performing private school without some kind of scholarship from the school, as tuition exceeds the voucher for nearly every private school in Knoxville. The Board of Education wants disabled students to be allowed to participate in vouchers. As seen in previous legislation, the private schools seem hesitant or unwilling to provide this service. Additionally, the private schools are unwilling to have their students go through the same rigorous testing that you require as a school board and us at the state level. Lastly, the only true positive that the Tennessee Department of Education states is that parents, despite them not doing as well, like having their children in private schools. This cannot be the deciding factor. Thank you all.
Thank you. Ryan Beatty. Ryan, if you'll state your name and county of residence, you'll have three minutes.
Hi there. My name is Ryan Beatty, not Beatty, but thank you.
Sorry about that.
No, it's okay. Ned Beatty, whoever. And I am a few things. I am a resident of Knox County and Ann Templeton's district. I am a proud product of Tennessee public school system, and I am also a taxpayer. I am really proud to call myself a product of the Tennessee public school system. And as someone who is educated in the Tennessee public schools, I know that they deserve more than policies that divert money from those schools. And that's why I think this addition of support for school choice to the Board's legislative priorities is odd. As members of a Board of Education, you are elected to represent and make decisions for the Knox County public school system. I must question why a Board of Education of a public school system thinks any public funds should be siphoned away from public schools. That's where my taxes come in. Simply put, as a taxpayer, I don't always have a say in where my taxes go, but I know that at least here, in this meeting, I have a chance to tell you all, elected officials on a legislative body, to please not endorse a policy that means my tax money could end up benefiting a private school. School choice already exists. We already have charter and magnet schools, and families who want to homeschool or private school their kids will continue to do so, no matter what. To call this school choice rather than what it really is, diverting money from, diverting public money from public schools is a dishonest scam. Thank you.
Thank you. Christiana Anton. Christiana, if you'll state your name and county of residence, you'll have three minutes as well.
Hi, Christiana Anton, 37917. I live in Reverend Butler's district. I too am several things. I'm a Knoxville resident, a secondary English educator, master student, angry taxpayer, and member of Public School Strong. Your behavior tonight, or what I perceive to be your behavior tonight, seeing that we haven't seen the amendment yet that everybody came up here to talk about, has revealed to me that you are incredibly similar to your politicking city council counterparts. As public servants, your legislative priorities should not include advocating for the disinvestment of our public schools by supporting voucher schemes like the so-called Education Freedom Scholarship Act, or expansion of charter funding, in my opinion. Private school vouchers and charter schools, as we've already heard, have no proven efficacy in raising student success on benchmarks, nor do they improve student overall experience. As a taxpayer, I do not feel comfortable giving my support to exclusive private schools to the neglect of every public school student in Knox County. Y'all have heard about Governor Lee's voucher scam. I'll skip down a little bit. We know that this money that they're allegedly going to give to working-class families to send their kids to private schools is not enough to send them there. We know that this is really going to benefit. And as public servants, you have a duty to public schools, not private interest schools or otherwise. Instead of giving away public dollars to subsidize private schools, why don't we use public funding to provide truly free public schools, ones without excessive fees or barriers to extracurricular programming? Can our Board advocate for better and more counselors and student psychol, sorry, school psychologists to help serve the students in District 9, who just lost one of their classmates to police violence? Can our legislative priorities center the students who come to school every day afraid they are going to be shot and killed? Can we actually support special education students, not advocate for them to take a voucher that strips them of their federal rights? Speaking as an educator, these are the priorities that are on teachers', families', and students' minds. Nearly every educator goes into educating because they want to help all children, which is who public schools serve, all children. As our school board, that is charged with managing and stewarding public schools. All children should be who you are serving, not private interests, like I said. We know they don't serve all children, private schools or any non-public schools. They, since their beginning, have been built to be exclusionary, to separate the us and the them. And I thought we learned our lesson that separate and equal was not true nor constitutional, but I'm just here to remind you that that does not work. And it's not what I believe a strong multiracial democracy looks like, nor the rest of my Public School Strong counterparts. We believe that investing in students, our public school students, giving the dollars that you're oh-so willing to take away from them to private schools, is what a strong democracy looks like. And to any KCS students here or listening, know that you are worth more than every dollar they're fixing to take away from you to give to somebody else. Your future is bright, and we are here to fight with you for your right to equality education.
Thank you. Madam Chair, that concludes public forum on this topic.
Thank you, Mr. Triplet. Ms. Cote, can you read the item? Well, we're doing legislative priorities, but we do need a motion and a second. We jumped into, into our public forum speakers first.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Triplet. Move a second. Second by Ms. Christie. We will now move on to discussion. Reverend Butler.
I had my light on before Mr. Triplet.
Oh, I'm so sorry, Reverend Butler. Was that for a motion?
Yes.
All right, motion then. I apologize.
Thank you.
We used to have people just jumping in. Motion by Reverend Butler.
I move that we approve the Knox County Board of Education 25, 2025 legislative policies as printed on the sheet without the additional, optional additions from, for Board of consideration.
Okay, so we have a motion to adopt these without any addition.
Without this.
Okay. And a second, so that motion is by Reverend Butler, second by Ms. Bike. So we will discuss this motion. Okay. Okay. Ms. Fontana Ridley.
Okay, so I've provided an outline, but to be honest, I haven't written an outline since I was in college, so. And I definitely haven't written one since I was having to type on a word processor, if you can even call it that anymore. I have printed a sheet, and I've given it to each one of you. And I believe, and I don't want to disrespect anybody here on the Board, but I believe that we are here as public school representatives, not private school advocates. Some concerns that I have have already been brought up by our speakers, and I appreciate you all's willingness to get up in front of, of the body. They, by design, vouchers are exclusionary. Students with IEPs give up the guarantee of services. Private schools do not have to admit students, have to admit students who apply. Vouchers are not available to undocumented immigrants. Transportation is not available. Private schools may expel students for any reason, and private, private schools are not affordable for most, even with the voucher. A few things, another concern, lack of oversight on how funds are spent. Opening the system up opens it up for fraud, and just in, in pretty much every state that has them have reported fraud. In Arizona, and this was just, this just happened in December, a couple out of Colorado was indicted for defrauding the state of Arizona for applicant, applications for 50 students, 43 of which did not exist. In Texas, forgeries on birth certificates led to approved applications totaling in over $600,000 in lost money. Negative or insignificant outcomes, this is from the Tennessee Department of Education data, math proficiency, public schools outperform private schools. In ELA, English Language Arts, public school outperformed private schools. Not sure exactly apples to oranges, because private schools don't have to take the TCAP, but that was what was provided on the website. By the numbers, a comparison of public school enrollment and students already in private schools receiving vouchers, in Arizona, 90% of the students in Arizona go to public schools, and 82 of the students receiving vouchers were already in private schools when they applied. New Hampshire is similar. 89% of their students go to public school. 89% of them were already in public schools. Texas, 89% go to public school, already in private school when, when granted vouchers, 75%. Public schools in Wisconsin, 85% go to public schools and already in private schools when we're granted vouchers, 76%. As was mentioned before, voucher systems were designed to help people who were already in private schools, not to help people get a leg up, because it, it doesn't happen. The tax argument, I've had, I've heard a lot of people say that they don't want their tax money going to public schools if their kids go to private schools. And I did some math. I am, I was an educator, but I was not a math teacher. 3.26% of an average person, or of everybody's income generally goes to, Tennessee goes to education. The vouchers are $7,075, and I've put a few examples of an income of $35,000, which is a state median, pays $1,141 in taxes that go to education. Income of $60,000, only $1,956 goes to education, and at an income of $100,000, only 300, or $3,260 go to taxes. Then nowhere near the $7,075 that they would be getting for a voucher. Not to mention if they have more than one student. And I'm almost done. So 39% of Tennessee schools receive less per student spending than vouchers promise. And Knox, Knox County receives $3,678.21 from the state per student. The rest is local and federal monies. I also want to say something about the teacher bonus that is in the legislation. For one thing, teachers are not ignorant, and a rider that has nothing to do with the subject matter of the bill is an insult. Teachers are not a pawn in this legislatures, in this legislation, and teachers are offended. I had a couple of questions that I wasn't sure what the answers were, so I don't know if somebody can answer it. What happens if an application is made, awarded, and accepted, but the student is not accepted to the school? Is it only if the student is already accepted to the school, or does that happen before so that they can decide whether they can go to the school? And also, what happens to the voucher money if a student is admitted and then expelled for any reason during the year? Those were just kind of thoughts that I had today. I did a little homework, and I hope that you all find the information on that sheet that I gave you. that I gave you informative. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Spike?
Thank you. I think when we're talking about students of lower socioeconomic status and ones that need access or have barriers in place, I do really look to Representative Sam McKenzie's guidance as the 15th Legislative District does generally have more disadvantaged families and students and people. I also look to Reverend Butler and his guidance and how he represents District One. But also, District Four has, it's also a fair share of families that have barriers to private school without a voucher, and the voucher will not help them. Students that have ADHD, to a certain extent, if they have high support needs, they can't even pay to go to a private school in their, out of their own money. It doesn't matter how much money they have or how much money they want to pay, that school won't accept them. And, you know, if you have a student that's in a wheelchair, if you have a student that is deaf, all of those schools have the freedom to not accept that student, even if you want to pay out of your own dollars, not necessarily a voucher. And that is really problematic to me, because I don't think a voucher is suddenly going to make these schools that are supposedly better than our school, schools, accept these students. And I think, so that argument doesn't really, doesn't really work for me as far as school choice and, and things like that. And so I just, I really, truly cannot be in favor of that, in favor of these other ones, and that's why I'm in favor of this amended version from the 2024, which Reverend Butler motioned for. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Spike. I will be voting no on this motion, because I do want to, I do want to, one, vote on the two additional suggestions. And, you know, this debate around school choice seems to put people in two camps. You're either for public school, or you're against public school, and I completely firmly reject that. My biggest privilege is being a mom. I'm in the schools all the time. I've seen firsthand how children can thrive when given opportunity. I've seen outstanding educators pour into our children. I believe in our public school system. I send my own children to KCS schools, but I also believe in school choice. I believe parents should be empowered to make decisions that are right for their child's education, and there is not a one-size-fits-all solution. I think that these two things are not in conflict. I think these beliefs are centered around the same thing, what is best for the child, not the system. Families across Tennessee have flexibility. They do have choice if they have means. Education is the great equalizer, no matter your background or income, and it is the most powerful tool for achieving the American dream. We've heard from opponents, I hear from folks all the time, that school choice claims to take out funding, defunds public schools, but in just the last four years in Knox County alone, our budget has increased by 35% in the past five, again, in the past five years. That does not include the federal pandemic relief money that we had, that was more than $150 million, and all while during the pandemic, our, our student numbers actually decreased. So while our student numbers decreased, our funding increased. We have voted to increase teacher pay, improve security, increase funding for high-quality instruction, and I think that competition makes everybody stronger, and families deserve opportunities, no matter their zip code. And I know there are several school board members who are in favor of school choice, and I think that speaks volumes as well. So I will be voting no on this motion, and hopefully voting yes, if that comes to it, on Mr. Triplett's suggested recommendations. Ms. Templeton?
Thank you. Appreciate it. So many things have been said tonight. I want to thank those of you who stood up and spoke. Those were eloquent words, and I appreciate it. Ms. Hancock, thank you for the time you put into that speech that you made, and everybody else who did as well. Thank you for your time. I, whole thing written about why I don't agree with vouchers. I'm not going to read it right now. I hope I won't have to, because I truly believe that this conversation is about this board looking past our partisan differences when it comes to communicating with our state legislators. I think that we can come up with a list of legislative priorities that we all agree on and submit those in unity, so that if any of our state legislators call us and say, hey, how's it going in your district regarding A, B, C, D, or E, we can speak to that with honesty and with integrity. When we send this off to Nashville to say, this is the Knox County School Board's legislative priorities, that means that we've all signed off on it, more than any policy, quite frankly. When we send it off, it means we all agree. That's what it should be. This should be a document of unity on the issues that we can all stand behind. So I would, while, while I'm on one side and maybe somebody else is on the other side, I don't think that that's what this conversation right now is about. It's about what can we disseminate to and agree?
Thank you. Ms. Christie? We have our lights on. I had to make sure. It's going in order there.
And as I said earlier in the week, I honestly think that this decision is beyond our control either way. I think that those at the state level have made their positions known on this one way or the other in their campaign platforms, and typically, if somebody makes something a campaign platform, another body's not going to be able to, to change that. And I am curious, Mr. Triplett, how you would feel about adding something urging them to have schools receiving public funds meet similar accountability measures that our public schools meet, and be transparent in reporting those achievement scores? And, and that would just be, in the same manner, public schools do, and that would just be so parents can make informed decisions based on that transparency and reporting, just encouraging them to look at those measures moving forward. I mean, do you have strong feelings about that?
I'd be okay if you want to come up, if you have some good wording you want to put in there.
And?
I think on the fly exactly how that wording would go, but we can let Lauren speak and think through it and...
Yeah, well, I, I have some, some tentative wording here, where it says, "We advocate that all institutions receiving public funds to educate Tennessee students meet the same accountability standards and emphasize the importance of transparency in reporting student achievement data, enabling all Tennessee parents to make informed decisions regarding the education of their children."
Can you say that one more time? Because that was a lot to read and not to digest.
Yeah, I will.
I was going to say, I need to hear that again.
Okay. And we ask that all institutions receiving public funds to educate Tennessee students meet the same accountability standards as public schools. Furthermore, we emphasize the importance of transparency in reporting student achievement data, enabling all Tennessee parents to make informed decisions regarding their children's education.
Think through that. I do like the portion about achievement data, so we can kind of figure out where they land.
And this is, I mean, this is just encouraging them to, to take that in mind as they are looking at the, I mean, I know there's multiple proposals in front of them, and it is something that I would like for them to consider, because I do think it's important for parents to have that information, and for the public to have that information if we're using tax dollars to fund it.
Let me think through that.
Ms. Morgan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. While I believe in school choice and the right for parents to choose what is best for their children, and I am a proponent of charter schools, I'm thrilled that we were able to pass the renewal of Emerald tonight, and I'm, I'm happy for the great work that they're doing there. I also don't believe that being pro-school choice means you're against public schools. I am very much for public schools. I choose to send my three children to public schools, and I serve in the seat on the school board as a fan of public schools. I believe you can be both for public schools and believe that parents have the right to choose what is the best school option for their children. However, I don't believe that it is in this board's realm of duties to make vouchers a legislative priority, as we don't have control over what the legislature does. I think it's our job here on this board to make, to make Knox County schools the best that they can possibly be, and be the place for our, where our students and our families want to get an education and choose to go to school, and I believe that we need to continue to be focusing on that. I think our efforts should be focused on things that will support our teachers and help our students in Knox County schools right now.
Thank you. Ms. Spike?
Thank you. Um, I, I think I can agree with maybe adding in some requirements for schools that might accept ESAs and the school choice. I'd like to add that they have to background check all of their staff, that they have to have certified teachers, they need to be ADA compliant, that they also do TCAPS, and then also abide by third-grade retention. I think that that is only fair if they're going to accept our money. Seems reasonable to me.
Thank you. Reverend Butler?
I'm, I'm going to cut my light off, because I want to make sure everybody had a chance to speak before a call for the question.
Yes, sir. Okay. So, there's a lot of discussion. So we are voting right now strictly on this document and no other suggested changes, or no other suggested additions. Correct. So if this vote passes, this is it, but if this vote happens to fail, then we would go back to this, you know, I was thinking maybe this could be our base, and then vote on each addition, additional consideration separately. Does that make sense to everybody? I know this can kind of get a little, a little wonky. Yes, Ms. Fontana-Ridley, you have a question?
My, when you held it up, does this mean the 20, wait.
So the, yeah, so the 2025, it looks like this.
Yeah.
That, so what Ms. Cottney did with this, was she took all of the discussion from Monday night and compiled it into this document.
So it's actually two pages?
No, no. It's just one page. The second page are Steve's considerations. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. So now that we got procedure, oh, Mr. Dubler.
Well, so, so you all do need to clarify, because what I heard you say, Madam Chair, is, and the way I understand Reverend Butler's motion is to approve the 2025 legislative priorities as written and as is before you.
Correct.
But to exclude the additional, the, the optional additions for board consideration. Reverend Butler, is that correct? Okay. So if that motion is approved, then these options are out.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
And then you said you may want to look at some additional, so some additional that aren't these options, you all could make motions on.
Then we would go back to, you know, passing this as, you know, as another vote just to pass this, and then separate votes.
But I just wanted to make it clear as well, so, so if that, if that motion passes, then you all could, somebody could make a motion on some, some additional considerations, but not the ones that are attached. Okay?
Okay, gotcha. Okay. All right, Ms. Cottney, will you please do a roll call vote?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Butler? Ms. Templeton?
Yes.
Ms. Fontana-Ridley?
Yes.
Ms. Spike?
Yes.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Triplett?
No.
Mr. Wright?
No.
Ms. Christie?
I'm, I'll pass.
And Ms. Henderson?
No.
Ms. Christie, would you like to change your pass vote? So that's five yes votes, three no votes, and one pass.
All right. Motion carries. Oh, Ms. Christie, you have your light on. Oh, okay. All right. All right, Ms. Cottney.
I'm sorry. Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. 8G, consideration of student number 2024-001 disciplinary appeal.
I move to not have a hearing, and I'm not sure how I want to term that, Mr. Dubler, but...
I make a motion.
I make a motion not to have a hearing.
Or to uphold the...
To uphold.
I make a motion and uphold the decision that was already...
The decision of the superintendent.
That's correct.
And I'll second.
And, if I may, Madam Chair.
Yes, please. And there's a lot of lights on.
Yeah, and I mean, and you all can have your discussion. You know, but, but again, I would, I would, I would caution you to not discuss the facts, because those are confidential, but, but I did want to clarify what the vote would be, and I think, I think you've already clarified that. So, so a yes vote at this point upholds the superintendent's, the superintendent's decision on the record that, that you all have reviewed, and then, and then this, this case would then end. A no vote would be to have a hearing, and it would be a confidential hearing on the facts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dubler, for that clarification. Reverend Butler?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I support the Knox County Schools Administration and all the work that they've done to this point. This is the first time that I have been involved with this process, and I think for most of us, it may be our first time, and I think when we were, I'm not sure if, I don't remember as, for the last 15 years I've been attending board meetings, that this has happened. So this is the first time, and not getting into the facts, but more about procedure, I'd rather err on the side of having a hearing and not needing it than needing a hearing and not having it. And so, and I talked with some folk who have done this in other communities, other, other districts, and the board may want to go through this process so we can know we've gone through it and know what's required for the record, so that we can surely say, yeah, okay, the record was what we needed to have. So, and I've come to this conclusion, arguing with myself, both sides, but an appeal, and if, and, and I have, I came here really thinking I was going to automatically, you know, vote to, to uphold the administration's decision, but at this point, I think it may be the board's best, in the board's best interest for the district, for us to take a look. That's, that's the best I can say about getting into.
Thank you, Reverend Butler. Ms. Fontana-Ridley?
I have a brief statement to make. As a former teacher of the student involved, I feel I can't approach this situation without bias, therefore I have to recuse myself from consideration of this appeal.
Thank you for that. Thank you. Any more discussion on procedures? All right, well, seeing there is none, Ms. Cottney, can you please do a roll call vote?
Dr. Butler? Dr. Butler?
I think I'm saying no.
Yeah.
Because I'm saying we need to have a hearing.
Correct. So the, yeah, so what we are voting on is to uphold the current decision made by KCS Administration. So you're correct in that vote, Reverend Butler.
Ms. Templeton?
Yes.
Yeah, this one's backwards. You have to think about it.
Ms. Pike?
Pass.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Triplet?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Ms. Christie?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Ms. Pike, would you like to change your pass vote? That is six yes votes, one no vote, and one pass. And then Ms. Fauntler Ridley recused herself.
Motion carries. All right. We do have some public forum speakers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Candace Banister. Candace, if you'll state your name and county residence, you have three minutes.
Candace Banister, Knox County resident. After Will died, his employer reached out to us to offer food for our family and friends the day of Will's service. I thanked them, but told them there'd be quite a crowd. They say they didn't care how many, they wanted to make that day easier if they could. They came and set up and fed nearly 100 people the day of Will's service. His manager told me that Will was, she called Will the topknot because he always pulled his hair on top of his head, but also because he was their hardest worker, the only one they allowed to clock in early because he went straight to work and never complained. She said they missed him and wanted to do this for our family. My older son worked at the theater. They gave him the week off, paid for it, paid him for it, and then had a fundraiser for youth suicide. My husband's employer matched donations given in memory of Will to Will's scout troop. My employer intimidated Will's friends, sent someone to my house to intimidate us by asking if we knew our son was a drug dealer, and reported untruths about me because I told them the executive administrator had bullied my son when the superintendent ordered my son back to school. Sadly, Knox County Schools has a long history and culture of intimidation, harassment, and bullying, which Will and our family have experienced and suffered through over the last eight years. On December 5th, I watched as Ms. Owen spoke of 43 complaints from staff and parents from my son's school regarding the behavior of the executive administrator have vanished, and that a lead person in HR said that no formal complaint process was ever initiated. One of the current assistant superintendents took extensive notes from many of these employees in her previous position. Where are those notes? Where are the 43 written complaints? Why didn't HR initiate the investigation? The admin was moved to HR as a secondary supervisor on the Friday before students returned for the 1920 school year. What were his duties? The optics on him being placed in HR and 43 written complaints about him disappearing from his file are pretty bad. You have the power to insist that this culture of bullying, intimidation, and harassment come to an end. You have one employee. Tell him to do this investigation. Tell him to find out why none of these complaints are available. Tell him you don't want a bully put in charge of the five regional directors, and by extension, every building-level administrator across the county. Sunday will be Will's 24th birthday. I don't think I can convey to you what it feels like to face his birthday when he's no longer here on earth. I have not seen Will since he was 16 years old. I have not hugged him, heard his voice, seen him walk into a room, heard his laugh, or seen his smile. I have not touched his beautiful red hair. I have not set our table for four. I have not bought him a gift or taken him shopping, and he loved to shop. I have not had the joy of making his favorite meal or watching him fall asleep on the couch after a long day. I really don't even know what Will would look like at age 24. I have endured seven birthdays without him, and Sunday, January 12th, I will endure another one. In all of these almost eight years, Knox County Schools never investigated, even investigated the man who bullied our son, even with 43 written complaints. Instead, they tucked him into a desk in HR starting in 2019, and then moved him to a new, very high-profile administrative position in May of 2024. Do better in honor of Will's 24th birthday and all of the students in Knox County Schools. Please do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, that concludes the call.
Thank you. Everybody, enjoy your long weekend, and we are adjourned.